How's that sound? Can you hear us? One thing's for sure, Tucker, you've never thought you would have so many technical jobs. Feedback? Good. How's that? Better? Live? All right. Meeting everyone, this is the town council, regular meeting. It's Wednesday, June 14th, 2023. It is 7:05 PM. We had a little late start because we're in a new location, getting all the technical stuff out of the way. And we are going to start off with the pledge of allegiance. And if Lars would come up, Lars is here actually doing a Boy Scout project. He's attending a meeting for one of his badges. So we're going to put him to work. So step up here and if you'll all rise, raise the flag. Thank you, Lars. Andrew Brooks out there in Zoom land. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Wow, you sound like the Wizard of Oz.
Another hat I wear.
All right, Penny, will you all roll?
Bates Mason. Rita Batino. Tom Betterworth.
Here.
Mark Timsky.
Here.
Steve Carl.
Here.
Hoffman. Ecknor. Arianna Otten. Kimberly Norton. Gary Orman. David Ross. Young.
Thank you, Penny. All right. So just technically, those of you reaching for the mics, it's a switch, not a button. So a little switch on top. That's all you have to do is switch it on. That. All right. Minutes. Approval of minutes for the following regular meeting, May 17th, 2023. Any deletions, corrections, additions to the minutes? Couple little ones. Sure. Go ahead, Tom.
Independent accounting firm. Page five. That sentence just is hard to parse. Could you just start it out by saying Ms. Kelly Lenz presented period? Then start it up again with in accordance with blah, blah, blah. And then on page nine under education, officers of the Board of Education were named. Great.
Anything else? Yes. All right. Motion to approve the minutes. Second. Mark, all in favor? Nessie and Thomas, thank you very much. All right, Kevin Moynihan, first selectmen's update. We need a mic for Kevin. Yeah, one of ours. I just take one of ours. Yeah. Yeah, otherwise it's not going to pick you up.
It's Batino has rocked.
Hey. Evening, Town Council. Good to be with you. New venue, beautiful new library. Kim and Dee Dee Bartlett room. So I'll give you the update that I gave last night to the Board of Finance, fresh off the press. Waving House bathrooms are not going to be completed in June, but they're largely complete underway. I was over there the other day and they're doing the tiling. Expect to be done in July. Being done by Alden Bailey, who's also done our roof and our other ADA projects over at waving house, waving house elevator project was started yesterday. Should be a plus 60 days to have the shaft put in. And I think the elevator will be installed over the Thanksgiving, Christmas period. Also, you may have noticed the waving house service area projects underway. That's a 50 50 project with the waving park conservancy. As most of our projects are now. Lapham Center CHP, the machine is installed and hooked up, waiting for gas to come into the wave any park. The deal we had with Eversource was that they weren't going to charge us to bring gas into Lapham Center because it was part of the downtown expansion project and under the rules that Governor Malloy's in your program, which terminated one year early by PURA. And they were going to bring gas up through the pool area into the paddle courts and also over to wave any house. If they bring it to wave any house, they want a capital contribution. Didn't anticipate. So we may not bring gas to wave any house. But anyway, the CHP unit is will power not only Lapham Center, but also the field lights and the water tower fields. 220 Elm is coming along nicely. That is here. He can give you a personal update probably. And playoffs, you're going to get an update. Tiger is I won't go into that. The PD project, the chief is here, but that building committee project is Bill's going to give you an update. So all these, you're giving an update tonight. Unfortunately, our road paving has been delayed a little bit by a few problems. And so we should begin to see the major roads downtown such as Lakeview and Church Street in some places that are do entirely in need of paving will be done starting in a few weeks. And then finally, Tiger asked me to remind you and the public that Aquaring is starting their 36 inch pipe installation on 106 from East Schools as soon as schools, school is out. And it's going to go all the way to the to the Wilton line. It's going to be very disruptive. People traveling in that part of town, detours. And then finally, I think you probably got the press release, the Board of Finance last night. Actually, this must be the last item, but what if an asset set to mill rate last night at 09% increase? Which was very satisfying. They decided to apply $6 million taxpayer dollars in general fund to the to you know, every year, like last year, they applied five million and only use one name. So it's kind of like we always have excess money to give back from the way we collect taxes. The land trust has signed their purchase and sale agreement with the North Water Company for 1124 Valley Road. Next Tuesday, the land trust will come and start the process. The Conservation Commission recommended the town participate through the land acquisition fund in the purchase of the additional acre, two acres and the house. So that'll start and then it'll come to you in June, July, as well as the Board of Finance. The the COO program is still highly successful. We have a meeting tomorrow and then anyway, talk more about it, but everyone's very pleased. Like it continues to evolve. The Metro North shutdown. I never would have guessed, but we have like 98% of our commuters are driving through the area. The rotten heights, some drive to Stanford, very few drives to was Hillary's favorite secret. Still, I tell you, the South and Alwak Station is a is a find and there's always hundreds of parking spaces there in the garage. My fear is that they don't come back. They're going to like going to or in the rotten heights. But there's actually plenty of first come, first served parking in those in those lots down there and our new Canadian people are getting there first and getting parking. Well, that's good. The Board of Selectmen working commission is meeting tomorrow night is going to recommend that we extend the current permits into November, December to compensate for the fact that they've paid for a year and they didn't get a full year with the shutdown this this summer. And then finally, the UC was appointed, as you know, first meeting is tomorrow night, and I look forward to getting that mission organized and underway. Happy to answer questions.
That was graduation.
Excellent. I mean, got it in before rain. Oh, my God, I, you know, I superintendent, I was supposed to, you know, we looked two days ago, it was 86% chance of rain in the morning and then if the right decision, as it always is with Dr. Let's see. So yeah, okay. Questions, Penny?
It's the attribution amount greater than what we would enjoy from savings.
We really hadn't done that analysis because we thought they were going to do it for free. And then they suddenly wanted a couple hundred thousand dollars and we really have to do the analysis. They're going to bring it anyway, over into the pool area and the extra, pretty distance to the house. I'm not sure, but we'll do the earth particular. We haven't yet. They haven't scheduled the work. Work has been authorized to left the center, but not to wait anymore. Yes. Because it wouldn't, it would go through grass and not through the road. So that would be an easy project to do, but they still want, you know,
long term loans.
It's a same thing.
I have a question. Could you go over the mill rate again? I didn't hear that. I couldn't hear in the mic.
But the mill rate came in at three point three point oh nine percent increase.
Three point oh nine?
Three point oh nine.
Okay, thank you.
Eighteen point nine four up from eighteen point two currently. The amount to be based on taxation will increase 4.12%. 4.12%.
Did you say they took 6 million out of the general fund to bring the mill rate down? Is that?
They do that every year. Last year they did 5 million and they only end up using 1 million. You know, we, we, the way we put the budget together, we only project election of 98.5%. This has been subject of debate with people, audit committee, others. We always end up with more money. We also, on this town side, at least, we've always under spent our budget. And then this year we had the additional kicker up, greatly increased revenues from a couple of sources, especially investments, the interest rates change. So with all those things combined, it is only contributed a million dollars or so to the this year's 23 budget. Five. Next year will probably only contribute one or two.
Yeah.
There was a lot of discussion last night about the general fund is way too high. You know, it's a rainy day fund up in the 25 to 30 million dollar range is a very, very conservative rainy day fund. So yeah, I have the press release.
I've always been a huge fan of not having an excessive amount of money in the general fund. So it's good to hear. Completely different topic. As you know, we all received a letter regarding the use of the fields from the Athletic Foundation and it was signed by or CC'd and signed by a lot of the heads of the youth sports programs. Without getting too deep into that particular issue tonight, you know, as far as I'm concerned, it's an issue that affects thousands of kids and their parents in this town. When I tell you having kids using the fields, and I know many of my colleagues here have kids using the fields. This issue is at like DEFCON 10 for them in terms of having the appropriate logistical scheduling of the fields. And, you know, we did receive a letter with some proposals on how to potentially correct it. I know there's a lot of deciders involved with how that gets straightened out. But I would like to know, is there an assurance that this is a top priority for the first selectmen to move this forward and get something fixed immediately because it's a real terrible problem that we're having right now. And also I want that letter to be made part of our minutes for this meeting. I think it's important that the public is aware of that letter.
We met last week with the Fields Committee. And they're meeting tomorrow night. We scheduled for Monday night because of the girls lacrosse delayed. So it's very important that meeting be successful tomorrow night because all this sports teams, sports leagues will have their opportunity to understand and talk about the proposed schedule for next fall. Jay and John Howe have been doing this for years. It used to be Steve and Tiger, play Steve last year. I think the superintendent understands how important it is. I understand how important it is. And I've been talking to Mike Benvenzio and others, and I think we'll we'll find our way through to a successful meeting tomorrow night.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions? I have a question. Kevin, I'm trying to understand why it seems that Tiger keeps getting placed whenever there is a hot issue or whenever there is a need for somebody to address it. The poor guy can only handle so much. I don't understand how he has time for this. Don't you have other employees that can take on the responsibility?
Well, the good thing about Tiger, Tiger is not only an uber qualified public works director, he's also a sports enthusiast and someone who understands sports. Obviously placing Steve was was big shoes. Zach had not been hired yet as recreation directors. Ultimately, I think Zach will be taking that place and also perhaps Todd Deckman, who who's now the park superintendent, because John is really, we don't have a parks and recreation department. We have a parks department under Public Works and we have a recreation department and John has the title the first time of Parks and Recreation Director.
So Tiger will be relieved of that responsibility.
We've had, we've begun those discussions, not because Tiger actually enjoys doing it. And it's not that, you know, but honestly, it's been done by Jay and John for years, literally for 20 years. And Steve was part of that. And I think it
I'm just a little concerned over the the number of things that he's getting assigned to because I think it's too much for any one individual.
Well, he is the hardest working guy.
It doesn't matter.
Town hall. But he's also the one of the most qualified.
On the fields, I mean, I think it's obviously, it's going to become a high class problem because we have additional or fields now, which we complain in all kinds of weather and actually expanded the amount of playing across the board. It's just a matter, I think, part of it is whether they do a new scheduling. It's a software or something that really hones in on using the fields to their full making sure there's no confusion.
Green, it's green.
You know, thank you so much. Um, you're having three kids that are at the fields, lacrosse, baseball. This is a highly discussed topic at at every sporting event. And, you know, we have, let's, let's be honest, we have fantastic and gorgeous fields that like we representing and everyone's extremely excited. So it's a very positive. It's not a negative conversation. But it's definitely like, how do we utilize the facilities to the highest and best use so that we can provide access to sporting programs? And the the worst part is, is that when you see fields empty, not being utilized, other people lobbying for I'm on that field when others use it. So I think maybe there could potentially be revised the how the fields are being scheduled rather than that schedule. But yeah, I just a parent of children that are playing sports, just hearing the narrative, not out there marketing, not out there saying anything. People are just coming up to me saying there are better solutions.
Part of the issue is equity in sports. Oh, that's balancing act. The the information you had heard about a field being empty, it's not correct in terms of who is entitled to be there. So anyway.
Empty and entitled to be there, I think are two different.
But the people who were complaining with were entitled to be there. So okay.
I'm saying that it is a discussion that I think that we should, you know, have a detailed conversation.
By frankly, I think part of this, you know, Steve Banko was there and he was always around, you know, all the time. And we've lost a bit of that with Steve being gone. And so we're trying to fix it.
It was definitely for this me upcoming meeting, is there a way we can get one of our reps?
It's, well, that's a good question. I don't know whether it's a public meeting per se, but it's all the
Yeah. Well, I just, if Mike or Luke wanted to attend, I mean, I'd love to have one of
Well, I think any of us might want to attend, not just the men.
Sorry, I didn't mean to say anybody. I'm looking down on my left. I'm sorry. Anybody that wants to.
I think it's a quasi-public meeting. Technically, the Fields Committee meets because it's a staff only, which you're not required to have all your public meetings. But this meeting tomorrow night has so many representatives of the teams that I think are the league. So I think it's quasi-public meeting. So
Is it, are you using software to schedule?
Oh, yeah. No, there's no question. The process is transparent. It's just, it's really in the decision making. I mean, it's balancing act. And obviously we have some sports that dominate in this town. Not surprisingly. And but it is a question of equity.
I remember conflict within the same sport. As the field. So I don't even think it's about different sports.
Rita.
It's really okay. It didn't work out today. One of my questions is, I understand that equity is one part of it, but isn't also the fact that there are outside? Like it is, does it have anything to do with non new Canaan?
I don't believe so. Can pick that tomorrow night. You know, Jay and John and Tiger sure will be glad to answer questions tomorrow night as well as so.
Yeah, so be careful, only because I know we have our, what is that called? That zone?
That's the summertime only.
Only the summer. Okay.
That's not the issue. The issue is, you know.
So that summer's not an issue. It's just in school. I just wanted to clarify that. Okay. And then I just want to echo Christina's concern about Tiger because he is such a valuable resource. And I recall having a meeting where he had worked 140 hours in two weeks. And while I'm sure he's qualified to do everything, I worry about his health and, you know, us taking advantage of of him. So I just, I kind of echo your concern.
All right, we're already past the so any, any other questions on any other topics? Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate it. All right, moving on. I remember for review and update playhouse senior renovation project, we have, I here is at well, at least he's not working 140 nights.
I'm going to recuse myself, Steve.
Oh, okay. Thanks. I appreciate that. Welcome in. Hello.
Thank you for having me.
Hey, first of all, I want to tell you, you built a nice building.
Oh, thank you. It's nice to see it in use. And so on to the playhouse, we've, we've really dug into it over the last six weeks or so, we've, we've probably done a dozen meetings with various entities that are involved with the design and the cinema labs, people as well, trying to pinpoint exactly what they're looking for. We've met with HVAC a couple of times. We've met with the AV supplier and the ones who are specifying the AV equipment, the acoustical engineer, and then a bunch of the subcontractors as well as much of the town people. So we have a good feel for the project at this point where what the road, the path that it's gone down and we're we're pushing to get firm numbers that in the initial presentation, I think that there is a lot of allowances and I'm not sure that, I think they were accurate allowances, but over the next two weeks, we're going to pull all those numbers back together and have a real good view of what the firm number is, is there room for improvement on it? And is there a couple of different approaches that might make sense to this, to the project? And that'd be maybe the town is responsible for to carry the project to a certain point. Maybe Cinema Labs would do sort of the bit out the way that a more typical commercial arrangement would be done. So that might be a way to save some money for the town. We looked very hard at the HVAC, which is the biggest single line item. And the design is a good design. There's no doubt about that. The equipment was ordered and we investigated, could we stop that order and look at other ways to if that there might be to do some value engineering? And the whole industry is so slow these days that you, it was important that that the town ordered the equipment. They did because it will show up when it's needed. Other and what we found out is it's the Eastern HVAC had bonded the purchase and to back out of the purchase right now would be a very complicated idea. And I don't know that there'd be any savings out of that anyways. So but we need the equipment or the town's going to need the equipment six, eight months and I think it will hit that date, but no knowing. But everyone gives you better dates these days. So even with it ordered, it could still, it'd still drag on, but you know, it's, I think, just from what I've picked up along the way, along the with all these meetings is it's a complicated project that was impossible, I think, to anticipate a lot of the issues ahead of time that nobody has x-ray vision. It was originally going to be a code bringing the building up to code. And then every time they opened a wall, they, they found the worst case scenario. And it's I think probably the 1982 renovation probably hurt the building a little bit. In addition, if you go in there, there's concrete slabs that are elevated. They're three feet thick. And so, so it's, I, I, I think it's unfortunately, there's no way to have skipped this step if if we thought there was going to be great scenarios, maybe you demo the whole building ahead of time, but I don't think anyone thought that was the case. So it's so unfortunately, it's where we are. And hopefully there's ways to, I think the design is come together fast considering that it wasn't ever meant to be designed this way. So that's so I think that's the gist of where we are. So any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for you in one?
So if I
Mark first, then we'll
Mayan, thank you. Thank you. Just is there is there a chance that the current budget could be exceeded based on what you're seeing?
Yeah, we're, we're pulling all the numbers together. So we met with the acoustical engineer last week. That's, you know, there's a number, a real number that goes into that. And that's being priced up as we speak. So I, I don't have all those numbers. I haven't looked at the cumulative number, but we're trying to pencil in anywhere that there was an allowance. We're penciling in right now, I think, looks okay, but we don't have it.
Thank you.
How much of the interior fit out is creeping into the basic project that we had been presented?
Well, they, the, the design has finalized over the last couple of months for the, the fit outside of it. I don't have the exact breakout of that at this point, but it may make sense. As Tigers explained, it, it's more expensive for the town to undertake certain things than private though that's why it would make sense break it out, but
It should have never been together.
I think it's, this is my understanding is the town likes to control all the projects that I think Cinema Lab is going to contribute a pool of money to the project and the town was going to do that construction. And I don't think the town likes or typically for other contractors to come in and work in their buildings because they've in 1982, they didn't do some of those things that they probably should have done. So you, you live with that.
I understand that. My question is that if the fit out costs are exceeding what the cinema lab has budgeted, the town should not be picking up the difference.
Let me address that because I've been attending the meetings and I, I know a lot of detail. Cinema Lab had committed to contribute a million, 550 to their pit out. They continue to maintain that I can over that. And I, you know, keep on hearing them. I think they, they believe that. So and there's no provision for them, us to pay their additional expenses. No, I agree. That's why I say, you know, they're right now saying they're going to live within their a minute, million and a half, maybe 550. So I don't lose any reason to think that's not the case. And, you know, that, that's largely finishes, you know, what, what kind of wood 40 watt versus an alternative? And, you know, that could be value engineered. But they so far, you've spent some time with them. I think they, they, they believe they're coming in on their budget. Most of the overruns are infrastructure, you know, having to take out three feet of concrete and making the space for the elevator and the bathrooms in a way that is much more functional. More expensive. And the HVAC system actually, you know, is the biggest item. Because you have to, you have to ventilate and air condition entire building as if it's operating 100% all the time because there's a second floor, there's a lobby with a bar, you know, so it's like having four functions going out at the same time. They all have to meet standards of air circulation.
And I definitely don't think Cinema Labs is, is very flexible. It seems like that it like as nice as they can have up to there, but they understand that some things may go.
Kim.
Yeah. Hi. Um, so one of the reasons we wanted to have an owner's rep just to try to bring down the cost. Do you have any sense of if there's going to be any cost savings as a result of you being involved with this project? And then what's the timeline, uh, in terms of when we're going to notice? Because it sounds like you still don't know. And my last question is, are there RFPs being issued for the bids on all of the different aspects of the project?
Uh, in the next two weeks, we'll, we should be able to have a good set of recommendations, uh, going forward. Um, the town is in a contract with, um, Aldridge and Bailey. And so they're going at where they can competitively bid. They're supplying some of the labor themselves. So because of the business, I mean, I can, my estimating departments can check the unit costs, um, against what they're getting. So far, it seems like it's all pretty, uh, pretty accurate. Uh, as far as savings, that's give us the two week period to really pull all the numbers together. It took a little while to get up to speed. And because of the nature of this project, again, it was never meant to, it didn't start out as, this project was not where it started out. And so the architects had to pull together and get a whole set of documents together that were not matching the original drawings by, by a long shot. And so this is really, in some ways, a starting point of the project. And it was a necessary steps that had to go. And it's, I think the police station is probably feeling the same thing. It's, unfortunately, it's a hundred year old building, so.
I had one. Thank you. I appreciate that. So I have one other question. So there was an area behind where the balcony was that was, um, going to be part of the balcony of the movie theater. And I guess now it's not going to be. So it's about twelve hundred square feet. So one of my questions I had asked earlier is that going to be unrestricted public access? Because I understand the second floor has a club on it with an elevator with a code that people need to use to get up there. So is that area going to be fit out for the public who's paying really the lump sum of this huge overrun? Or is it going to be part of a private club?
That's not Ian's question. Um, I think the, uh, it will be available during the day to the public. Um, in the evenings, um, it's a private club. I don't, you know, private club membership open to anyone. Um, and, uh, I don't, I'm not sure, you know, it is open substantially amount of the time to the public.
I, I heard that it's going to be closed and you need a password to get up the elevator, but there's an area behind the front room that's twelve hundred square feet that the bathrooms are off of.
No, no, the, all the bathrooms are downstairs. Bathrooms for the building on the, around the first floor. There's no bathroom upstairs.
So I guess I'm just talking about the second floor balcony area that was unexpected.
Well, the, the, the upstairs became twice as big. Once they discovered this three feet, you know, when they twin the building into the, in the nineteen eighties.
Right.
They poured this three feet thick concrete. And once we realized they had to take that out just to be able to renovate the rest of the building. They, um, they, and, and they also, and they also couldn't find any way to make the few balcony seats where they are ADA compliant. So since you couldn't use them, unless you provided the access to them, they decided to take them out. And the upstairs became twice as big as was originally planned.
Right. So that's my question. It be, a lot of things happened along the way that we didn't expect, right? So the upstairs became twice as big, the bill to the taxpayer got much bigger. So can we use half of that space for the public? So it's kind of like the library. Someone could go up there and read a book. There would be chairs or whatever. It doesn't have to be a private.
Again, we have a lease with cinema lab. It's their space. It's not, you know, we don't operate the building. We only are landlord. We have a lease. I'd be happy to, you know, pursue this further.
But we didn't know that space was going to be, um, we thought it was going to be a balcony. So that's changed since the lease was negotiated.
Disappeared. What, once they realized that.
I understand that.
There were about, there were like two rows or three rows of balcony seats. There was no way to make them ADA compliant. So they decided to pull them out.
Right. But that wasn't part of the original lease. They thought it was going to be the balcony is my understanding. So now that it's not going to be the balcony, can it be the public space?
You're confusing the upstairs space, which was above, you know, the whole projection room, which was quite a significant amount of space.
I've seen it three times, Kevin. I'm not confusing it. I know exactly where the twelve hundred square feet is. It's behind where the balcony was.
Balcony seating?
Well, it's on the second floor.
Three rows of seats. Those had to go because there was no way to make them ADA compliant.
I understand that. That's what I'm asking. The public can use that since they're paying the bill for it.
Why don't we just? We get to choose what they want to do with the space.
Yeah, by the way, we participate in their revenues at five percent above a million dollars. That was the trade off, but we haven't, we don't have a standard lease. We have a participating lease.
Yeah, just because we, we have to flip the bill doesn't mean we get to dictate. In terms, I think they're mutually exclusive.
My, my understanding, the lease was done before that space was, um, discovered as not being usable. So that's why I'm asking, it happened after the lease was signed, but we, we can discuss it offline in a public meeting or something.
The projector room is totally gone. They don't need that kind of space anymore to project movies. They need a little box this big or something, right? Reality is that it's the, it's the, uh, balcony seats, which were in the, in the, in the two auditoriums. Right. There were like two or three rows. They couldn't be used because you couldn't make them accessible. So the decisions may take them out, which gave the opportunity with the projection room to, to create an additional space above that, which doubled the size of their second floor.
I understand that, but we can discuss it in another public forum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question, is the square footage increased double you said is, are the rent stuff?
Upstairs.
Correct.
No, no, but we, again, we have this participating lease, which they, in retrospect, tried to take, take back. Um, because we also had a side deal to have them participate in any cost overruns and they, they, they are participating in cost overruns. So it became a negotiation as to, we did not want to give up our, our participation. Uh, and, uh, and so we don't have, you know, it's not, Brett, we're getting us twice what bow tie was paying us. The, the base rent. So we have, we have a very good deal. We have a participating lease. And, um, and they are participating in the, uh, cost overruns.
I mean, we, we're, we're doubling the, the income plus we're getting a small amount of, um, revenue from whatever they sell there too.
How are we doubling the income?
From what we had from both. Well, bow tie, but bow tie was running a marginal operation. You know, that was an old stuffy building didn't demand much rent because it, it, uh, it wasn't a premier bow tie location.
A bigger impact on this project. And one of the things the board of finance picked up last night. And Ian, you talked about how you were not going to re-engineer the AC and you can't build new floors or whatever, but I think last night at the board of finance, they picked up on the fact that by splitting out the, and letting, letting cinema lab share in those outfits, there's a lot of positives that can come out of that, including, you know, every time we go out and spend any money as a tower, we're going to provide a wage. And, you know, it's a whole different element when a private organization goes out to bid for some, some of this stuff. So hopefully there'll be some saving. I think that was a really smart idea that.
Right. We're, we're going to pursue that very carefully to make sure. Out in the.
Good.
And, um, quick question. How much is that AC, the HVAC unit?
Um, off the top of my head, I don't know, but it's I mean, two, it's in between two and three, somewhere in that range.
I had heard two point four.
Their question is maybe have we just kept the facade of this building, ripped out the rest? Rebuilt it to specs that cinema lab. Cheaper than what we're getting ourselves in.
I don't think so. It's, uh, you've got the shell, the shell is fine. So there's some demo cost, but then you had to pay for materials. So no, but it's probably a sim, it's similar, but I think you're getting, building's still a good building. End up with the same footprint and I don't think you'd be getting out of basement, but that would be very.
All right. Any other questions for Ian before we let him go? All right. Thank you, Ian. All right. I had number five. Canadian Police Department building presentation. Quick overview of, of the work that the Canadian renovation group is doing at the PD, up from Bill Walbert.
Hello, Town Council. Thanks for having us here for an update. Um, not really, uh, a lot has changed, which I guess is the good news. Let's go through with, uh, start with the team. You know, we brought in Turner Construction. They're, uh, uh, same people who, uh, building this building. Um, we brought in Slam as our owners rep. Uh, the, you know, the architect we've had, you've met the Brian, uh, Hughes, uh, our architect, he's been working on this building since two thousand and seven. He's been very involved in numerous, numerous times, uh, numerous projects for the police building. So, um, he's very familiar with the building. And, uh, so we are, um, we're moving forward. The right now, um, just, you know, top down view of the numbers, they haven't changed. Construction, you'd have to say twenty million, golf cost, five million, move, two million. Contingencies, two million, one and nine million. So, uh, Tom Body's, uh, uh, two tranches. Prove the one point five and the twenty seven point five, get us a twenty nine. Why are you looking like that, Kevin?
It's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money. It's a lot of money. Okay. And so, um, we know that as well as anyone, which is the, the good news. The project itself, um, no change to what we've designed, which is, uh, a complete gutting of the interior and knockdown of the back, uh, border of the building. Uh, and we're going to put the important, uh, important elements of a police department, they're all important. But the, uh, the solid ports, the prisoner processing, things where bad things can happen. Um, are more likely to happen. Uh, we're all going to be new best of, uh, best of breed, uh, which is very important. Um, from an aesthetic perspective, uh, we'll, we'll be matching the bricks so that the whole building will look, you know, the nineteen twenty-eight, uh, construction. Um, the, uh, windows will be changed out so we won't have those, whatever you would call the current windows. They will match the, uh, senior. Yes, design of the original. So six paint, uh, windows. So the building will look, uh, like very much like it did in nineteen twenty-eight from the, uh, from the outside. From, uh, one of the major questions still out there, when you think about a building committee, uh, is the roof. We put on a new roof in two thousand and thirteen, ten years, something like that. Um, and it's a fine roof. Um, whether, uh, the town decides to put a new roof on, which would be, um, a composite that looks like slate, looks like slate, but is not slate, um, remains to be determined. And, uh, you know, that roof would be an expensive proposition, about four hundred and fifty thousand, plus or minus. Um, and so a lot depends on, uh, you know, boot of the public, a lot depends on how the project overall is going, a lot depends on a lot of things. So that's one of the decisions that the building committee has, uh, in front of it. Um, other decisions have been made pretty much on, on the interior. Uh, the interior will look, uh, sort of have a, like I said, a look and feel of, of a nineteen twenty-eight building. Um, the bathrooms, as an example, on the, on the first floor of the reception area will be the black and white tile, much like, uh, the old school bathrooms. And so it, uh, it will be a building that we're very confident the public will be very, very proud of. Um, the other big change for, for a lot of people will be the, the entry and exit will be, so you will now enter from the south side and exit from the north side. That's different than what it currently is. For the traffic, right? Yeah. For, for the car traffic. And, um, we've been working, as you would expect, with the EMTs very closely. Tom Turn kind of a shout out to him. He's been, he's not on the committee, but he has done an amazing job. Uh, in, uh, focusing the EMT, uh, issues and concerns, you know, they want to make sure that they get the ambulances out, uh, you know, when they need to. And so, uh, we've modified the parking a little bit to make sure the current, the, the corners are navigatable for, uh, for the ambulances. And, uh, so far, uh, so good. So that's been going fairly well. As far as, um, you know, Ian was talking about, uh, early ordering of, um, big, the, the big lead type items. And for us, that's, uh, switching equipment and generator. And, uh, so both of those orders are about to go out. They've been engineered, uh, Turner, um, anyone has, um, plout, uh, beginning of these things on time. It, it, it is Turner, but you never know. So, uh, uh, the orders for those are about to go out. Um, as far as final, look you all in the eye, numbers from real contractors who are actually going to be talking the walls and doing the real work, that we are probably month, five weeks away. Um, the construction drawings are all complete. The bid packages are being prepared. They will be going out in a few weeks. And then, of course, the people that will be bidding on these projects, uh, will be responding and giving us their bids. The latest sharpen the pencil, uh, view, uh, did not change by more than thirty thousand dollars. So, um, and we've been doing costs, uh, sort of, uh, three ways, right? The, the architect does them. Turner does it and our owner's rep Slam does it. And so these numbers have been, uh, um, you know, well scrubbed. They're looking at it pretty, uh, obviously very, very closely. Uh, they're pretty much where we were. Um, they said six, six months ago, but until we get those bids in our hand, uh, we can't look you in the eye and tell you that the construction is going to be twenty million dollars. Like, you don't know that yet. But, uh, all I can say is we feel comfortable, um, still using that number. Uh, all the work that they are doing, all the bits that they're using, or to the other projects that, uh, they're doing in this area. Um, you know, that's where they're getting this, uh, the data from. So we feel, uh, we feel pretty good, you know, as far as, as far as that's concerned. The other, uh, big issue, of course, is the move. And, uh, the building committee, we're paying for that, the two million dollar move. But in the, but, uh, in reality, the building committee, uh, is not involved with the day to day, um, the real work of the employees of the town. In other words, the police department, Joe Zagareski, another person who deserves a, a real shout out. Uh, he's sort of our town lead project coordinator, uh, working with Tiger that we don't want to work about him. And, um, also with Maria. And so, uh, uh, and by the way, police officers here, these guys are doing an awful lot of work in this, for this project. And, um, so right now, uh, it's, uh, it's, it's a complicated endeavor, right? With the, uh, with the board of ed, uh, getting, uh, getting their space fit up. And, um, then the board of ed moved out, but we leaving a lot of things for the police, the police will be moving in, the drawings for the police, uh, utilization of that building at thirty-nine locusts. And by the way, we'll take any opportunity to remind the public that for two years, the police station is going to be a thirty-nine locusts. And, uh, we don't want anyone in the heat of things, um, being confused about where to go if, uh, heaven forbid. So we like to talk about this at, at any time. Uh, so thirty-nine locusts for two years again will be when, uh, will be the police station. Speaking of timing, by the way, uh, there's been no change to that. Uh, we expect to start, uh, tearing down some things at the police station, the current police station, uh, around Thanksgiving. So call it the end of November. And we're currently planning for a two-year construction process. Uh, do people believe we could do that quicker than two years? Absolutely. Should the building committee say we'll be done quicker than two years? Absolutely not. So we're going to stay at two years and we'll see what happens. Cause that brings up the other question, by the way, of, um, what are the like, what's the likelihood of finding stuff you weren't expecting? And because, you know, we all know all this, but, and so, um, all like we could say is it's been poked and prodded many times. We've had a lot of engineers and specialists in this area, um, do what they can. But, um, as, as the architect was showing, uh, just a few weeks ago, we were in the gym at the, the current gym at the police station. He said, well, when we, when the guy's in here, he poked a hole here, he poked a hole here, and he poked a hole here. There was nothing there. But does that mean that if you poke the hole over here, that you wouldn't find something? Well, you don't know. You really don't know. Uh, of course, we have contingencies for this. We, uh, but, and we're, but we really aren't expected. We're really not expected. And we think that, uh, like I said, we've, uh, done a pretty good job of figuring it out.
There's been other projects that have been done. Or when the that center. So it has been more than poking product. There's been several other projects that have been done.
You're pretty good about it. Um, do you want to go through the, um, the move a little bit?
Move was, is going on track. Um, the building will work for our living space and, and our office space. Um, the biggest component of the move is our radio network and our nine one one system. We are working with all of our vendors now. Lot of people involved, a lot of, uh, technical aspects of it that have to be timed just right. We are working in and all on board. And we've had a kickoff meeting a few weeks ago for that. So we're on track for that. Quite well, we have a question about the parking in front of the building. Will the public lose some of the parking in front of the, the public parking in front of the station? Or will that remain the same? Renovated building? Not that where you're moving to.
The thirty-nine locusts.
No, we, we. Not taking any of that. No, be, uh, inside, yeah. And all the, all the cars and everything going in there? Put in there or we can spill over to the Locust Avenue.
No, we are.
Spill over to, I think it's forty-nine locust.
Now, you're still working on the safety on the, uh, what do we call it? The safe commerce area? What do we, what do we officially call that? Where, where people that are trading off eBay?
Yeah, there, there's going to be some things that we're going to have to have a spot in the front of a burnt bush building that's on video camera where people online transactions eBay or. But let's still be. We, we may not be able to do that. But someplace on Locust Avenue, you can do that. Questions, Christina?
So the merchants on Forest Street will not lose any parking spaces. The police will not be parking.
Some public may come in, at least a party and park on the street.
There will be no police cars.
No, those will be parked in. No, those will be parked in.
And you see what Forest Street is like at three o'clock and at five o'clock, right, I mean, my office is right there, it's it's backed up, and the last thing we want is. Police vehicles using that Forest Street access, they're going to be using Locust, that we want the the public to understand that. You want to get to the police station in a hurry, use Locust, especially late afternoon.
Okay.
Question, sounds like a great, well scrubbed project, I liked hearing that three different groups are looking at the bids, I have a question, Bill, when you get those bids in, can you negotiate? When you get the bill bids in, or do you just have to take a bid as is?
There, well, the question, the, we have an approved bidder list that Turner has, an approved bidder list at the town of New Canaan. And right now, if anyone wants to add anyone to that approved vendor list, they are free to do so. So we will only invite people to bid that we want to do business with. After that, you know, we presume we'll be going with the with the low bidder, most of these packages are going to be designed in a way to bring in the the most competitive bidding process.
Thank you, and then my other question is, when other renovations were done, are there permits that you found that were pulled on previous renovations, or are there no? You know, you said stuff was done on the third floor. Do you have a history of permits that were actually pulled pulled and approved for the renovations?
In fact, and I should have mentioned, we were just in front of P and Z about two, three weeks ago, and that went very, very well. They had comments about the plantings to make sure that they are data plantings, they would like to see a clock in the. In the group level, we'll see if that happens, but I promise them that we're at least going to price it out, and. But other than that, we got our, we got our permit.
Has there been an asbestos estimate, has there been inspection? You know what that expense would be?
Yes, we have. You've had hazardous material consultants into the building, but again, they. They can't guarantee anything, they feel good about it. But they can't guarantee anything, so we have those, we have those reports, but you know, until you actually tear down the entire building, you don't really know it, do we have? We have contingency for that, yeah, we do, we do both time and money, but we hope that's not where we're, where we will be spending the contingency dollars.
I assume that you probably have advised the estimators that there is lead in the back brick of the building. Used to be used as a shooting range.
Yes, that's going to be, that's being torn down, right, so we're taking that out, but yes, the demolition of that, that is.
That's already been removed. Bullet trap that was there years ago.
My understanding is that it's in the brick. No, I know that's not how they work, but I do remember the conversations about it.
So our, you know, our architect has built many police buildings and many shooting ranges, so just let is the issue, right, for for shooting ranges. And air remediation is a big issue, it's the number one reason why, well, you know, space is tight too, why we didn't want to put the range back or a trading facility. Back behind that police building, it would have been very tight, and you know, the neighbors back there are. Oh, those special people, and so we didn't want to cause them any. Free for anxiety, so we. Feel good about. You know, the demolition of that of that back brick, the back building, if that turns into a problem, you know, the the reality is they they cloak it in. Harp, right, they.
That's not where the old range was any, the range was in.
Uh, yes, I said, yeah, not yet.
And any other questions for?
Where are we with the shooting range?
You know, the building committee is not. In charge of the the shooting range, and you know, we have certainly taken a sense of the committee that we are. One hundred percent in favor of police training and anything that this town can do, you saw what happened in New Haven when when people are. These are maybe not necessarily as well traded as they should be, but some large. Best way to describe it, finds that when we get the.
Forty five million.
It's a big one, that's a forty five billion dollar settlement, that was settlement was the word I was looking for, and so, yeah, we're we're all in on police training. But where it's necessarily going to be. You know, our committee is. Involved with that right now.
I ran into Paul Foley last week, and we were talking about how. The, when the, when the architects and builders looked at this, at the actual bones of that building, they were really complimentary on how. What a great building it was, and how well built it was for. Yeah, so, and and you know, that's a very exciting thing to hear. He did mention the roof, though, and and to your point earlier, you know, an average person, if they did a brand new house and they put. No one's putting twenty nine million dollars in their house, but if they put a couple million dollars in their house, the very first thing they want to make sure was okay, is when the rain hits on the roof, so. I mean, if it's, if it's. A question about whether or not we're going to put a roof on there, we should really look at that, because you want to make sure that's right before you spend that kind of money.
I think the building committee agrees with you, it's just hard to take that. Four hundred fifty thousand dollars out of your pocket and spend it already, we we like it in our pocket right now, but I think. Again, if we took a sense of the committee, Mike, would you say that we had a nice discussion about it on our last meeting, and, you know, it.
There's another two years are going to go by before we even, you know. At the risk.
And you, you gotta spend on your roof, you know, it's the last thing in the world you would, you're going to crimp on, so.
As we, if we don't do it now, and then we have to replace it next few years from now, I think people are saying, what in the world was the building? Why didn't they include? That's really what we're stuck with, so.
Well, I think this is why the building committee wants to talk about it in front of the the town bodies, right, and because. Will be a decision, and we want to get the sense of what, you know, of what, you know, people think, we don't want to make a back, you know, decision in a vacuum, we want to, we have to get a sense of what other people are thinking as well.
Thank you, Bill. Just flip that top.
Um, I know the police and the EMS don't have to be next to each other, they aren't in another town, but because they have been, and sometimes we rely on each other. Is there anything like, is there a police officer once in a while going to EMS or anything like that?
There's a lot of. To obviously separate these buildings to make them independent of each other.
You mean operationally?
No, I know the HVAC's been separated, and the sewer still has to be separated, right, yeah, but no, no, just in general that they're not for two years, they're not next to each other. Well, like a police officer stop into EMS or anything like that, okay. Okay.
Obviously, we're used to working next to each other, but we don't rely on.
You don't have to.
Our building committee has a lot of experience with these, you know, with with building. Projects, and Patty Rashid here ran the Saks Middle School Building Project, Jim Bell was very involved with that as well, and pretty much every other building project since eighteen forty three, and. And so, you know, we, it's it's a group that's done a pretty good, you know. Been around the block with when it comes to these things, and I will say, as someone who, again, I was only involved with one previous building committee, which was Saks Middle School. The, and it's different when it's a school versus the town, but the. The support we have from the town, you know, with Joey Zagorevsky is just an amazing, remember, he was the owner's rep for Town Hall, I believe, and we liked him so much, we hired him, I believe. And so he's doing an amazing job for us, and all the employees over there at town have really been just wonderful resources for us all, and. Keeping the ball moving forward.
All right, but Tom. Bill, so I'm still not clear on the roof issue. As a homeowner, if I'm concerned about my roof, I'll get advice, you know, how many years are in this thing, you know, it's three years, five years, seven years to tell me, and then I'll. With that data, I'll make a decision. I understand that you're struggling with the decision, but what's the data?
That we think there's thirteen years left of the roof.
Thirteen.
Yeah.
Good, so it's that simple.
Yeah.
Do the math. Okay, thank you.
Slate roof, correct?
No, no, it's asbestos shingles.
We would be putting on, I think it's. Maybe it's fifty year, the recommendation of the architect. Put on a new roof.
We say.
Like to put on a new roof. Want to see where the the bid numbers come in. And then, you know, once we have all that.
Exactly.
You know, we'll be, we'll be back to, we just wanted to raise, raise to you the issue that we're wrestling with. Um, and. Surprised if we came back to you on it later.
So the the four to fifty thousand dollar number is for a composite roof that looks like slate. The current roof is asbestos shingles, so you're absolutely right, when you say, okay, we've down. You know, we pointed the brick, it's beautiful, we've got the new windows in there, this thing, we, this thing is looking fine, oh, look, you still have asbestos shingle roof. Asphalt, asphalt.
I was worried the whole time.
Would you say it was, well, it'd take seven other building committee people just to keep me out of trouble. So it would be an approved, an approved roof that we would be putting on.
Two quick questions, or two comments, we can shut it down, I think. One, yeah, I mean, as far as the roof goes, you don't build a fifty year building. Without, and have a thirteen year, we'll look like a bunch of jokers if we. Do that, but anyway, I just wanted to say for everyone on Town Council, this committee is dynamite, I mean, really. Between the professionals that are on it, the engineers, the architects. You know, the people who have been involved with buildings in the town, Penny Ration, Amy Murphy Carroll, I mean, I'm on all these calls, I mean, they are firing questions away. Drilling, digging, plotting, poking, all of the third party people we have in that room, and all of them are fantastic. I mean, this is a first rate operation, I just want to say that, and Bill's doing a fantastic job as chairman, so please rest assured, this is the crew you want in that room, hundred percent.
Thank you, man.
All right, that's a good way to end it, I think. Thank you, Bill. All right, moving on, item number six, charter revision. General discussion regarding possible upcoming charter revision process. And Maria, your name is on the. Agenda. Give me the floor.
So just to review the Finance and Government. Committee met to discuss the charter revision process. We went over a little background, the last, the charter revision process involves a town council. Agreeing to start it, and at that point, you have thirty days to form a commission and the process of analyzing everything in the charter. Looking at issues, having public hearings to find out if there are ways to improve the charter. The last one was completed in. Two thousand sixteen, I think July, so we're at about eight years of the last revision, and you can do a charter revision. Every ten years or so. So. We were discussing timing, basically, I think everyone in our committee meeting feels that, of course, it's good to. Review your charter and look at, you know, what can be better. I think the, now let everyone else speak for themselves, but we have all our information on the iPad to look back at everything. But the issue is, once the town council approves the process, the clock starts. And you have thirty days to find people, break out into your your groups, do your research, have meetings, publish in the paper. And I think the last one finished in a little over a year. So. So I think that's what we should talk as a town council, I think we all agree it's a good thing to do, but are we thinking this is something we should undertake? You know, immediately, I think the thought was, if we initiate it soon, it would come to the public for a vote. For the twenty twenty four presidential election, when you might have more voters out there having input. But I think you'll get focus, whether it's an election year or not, so I just. Maybe you want to open it up to everyone and see what everyone thinks.
Discussion at this meeting to see. You know, if there's an appetite to to keep going, Penny's done a lot of work on this so far. We really just need to get a sense of the council, whether or not. You know, the the concern is, once we literally get that. That kickoff time started, then the work really has to start, so. I mean, obviously, for the council and for mission, it would be. Uh, would be, you know, working, working to get this all done, so I think tonight what we want to do is sort of talk about whether or not we actually want to kick this off, or do we want to? Talk more about it at future meetings, or how how we all just take input from everybody. Maybe we'll just go down. Mike, actually, Mike's out there. We don't want to start it.
First of all, I I kind of think the the name is a misnomer, I, saying it's a charter revision assumes you're going to revise it. And Christina made this point at the last meeting, I I think it's, it should be called a charter review, and then the decision is then made. Whether or not you actually want to revise, and so I think that's a critical thing, and I just, I actually went. I read the bill. That this is regarding, so it does say in Connecticut that you should be reviewing your charter every ten years. So that's, that's, that's statute, right, so we should be doing that, number one. I mean, I would say that this shouldn't be undertaken lightly, any changes should be, you know, it, this is about. Stability and consistency, and we, that's what our charter is about, so we don't want to, we we don't want to take this lightly, changing things low and nearly. But I think a review would be healthy, and and I'm saying that because times do change, although we may not know. You know, we not, may not be posed with maybe an issue, there may be things we're not exposed to, that a full review could expose. That might be important, I personally do have a couple of issues that I think should be considered, but even beyond that, I I wouldn't go into the saying. This is the problem we need to solve, I actually think we go into it. Almost like blank, I mean, we could think about the things that we we thought about, you know, in the last commission, but I think we just think about how. You know, if we should even bother with revising it at all, or if there are critical things we think should be changed. And then those suggestions should come for us, we make a decision, and we we put it in front of the voters, I think that's a healthy thing to do. Businesses do this sort of thing more regularly, but you know, it's not as complex, so, you know. In my opinion, this is a healthy thing to do, but I wouldn't call it a revision, I would call it a review.
I can just, I know we're going in order here, but I want to address your comments. That is actually something that the former commission wrestled with also, because it really is a review. And there is the reaction to people, we're using the word revision, is that that's changed. As opposed to really knowing that it is a study thereof, and if there are issues, you do a revision. But it is statutorily named, so there's nothing we can do about it, except the attitude. That we carry going into it.
Thank you, I understand, and you're always good at the rules, I appreciate that, so I think if we cannot change the wording, I think we should make it clear that it it doesn't necessitate revising, if we don't think it's necessary.
Uh, anybody else down here?
I feel that, just like Rita explained, that. In order to appoint a commission, that means that the clock starts ticking, and you have to move ahead because the. Mission is to change something. If you have a review, be within the town council without a committee. And there would be more conversation and depth research as to what really needed to be changed. I don't think that any one of us is ready to present, these are the points. That we all feel we can support. Penny has written a list, but it's not everybody agrees with it, so that tells you that there has to be more research and thought put into. In balance with everything else in the town, to see whether or not things need to be changed, and I think that to. Appoint a committee and allow the clock to start ticking would be a grave, grave mistake, because we can undo it later on. So I think that we have to take a pause and not race it to have it during the presidential election. To me, it's more important to get it right than to have it, have the vote taken at that time, so. I I would say pause, and maybe after the summer, get together as maybe a subcommittee and wrestle with it and talk about it.
Yeah, I agree with Christine, I I just don't see a compelling need of changing the charter right now, but I think we should certainly engage in that discussion, whether it's appropriate to move forward in that direction. Just haven't seen anyone coming up to up to us and saying, you know, the wheels are falling off the bus, like, we have to get into this. Just haven't seen anyone coming up to up to us and saying, you know, the wheels are falling off the bus like we have to get into this thing and we need to change it. So. Let's have that discussion. We can, you know, move move forward, but I don't think we. Pointing a commission right now and starting that that process. I think we stand, do we need to um, implement that process?
Thank you, Mike Luke.
I actually, you know, Christina's and and Mike and Maria's comments, I think collectively, I would support their approach. Maybe there might be. You know. A little bit differences, but I think transparency is key, understanding what we're. Accomplish. And and, you know. Again, the word transparency is extreme. Anything here getting feedback and not being forced in terms of in terms of a timeline to make a decision to appoint. Is is this appropriate and what are we looking to accomplish? So um, I think I heard four people or multiple people he uh, here. Uh, with their their uh, opinions and and comments. And I think they they all, in my personal opinion, they all align very well. And I think. We have this approach. I think the outcome would be very successful.
I I need to clarify something. So we we do differ on one point, although we agree that this is something we shouldn't take lightly and we should do at some point. I I I think we differ on timing because I do think it's important that we put this, if we're going to put it in front of the voters. You have the most participation. At in a a general election time. So that would be twenty twenty four. If we waited, we we can't put it in front of folks until twenty twenty six. Uh, or twenty twenty eight. Um, if we waited twenty twenty eight, that's now waiting. I don't know if we, I don't know if we're able to do that statutorily. If we waited to twenty twenty six, you know, participation voter participation is like sixty percent versus eighty percent, which I I think we want the most voter participation involved in this. So while I understand your points and I and if we, you know, that wasn't an issue, I I think it is an issue that we get it in front of. Um, people in the right time. And I think twenty twenty four would be optimal, in my opinion.
My point was that it's better to make the decision with the right facts than to make a hasty decision and come out with an outcome that we don't want.
That's assuming it would be hasty, but yes, I I I agree with that.
Can I make a comment? Um, I think it's great to revise anything. Um, when you write a paper, you revise it. I I guess um. I'm just concerned about appointing a commission at a time when it's summertime and I I would like to see instead of a subcommittee. Take on studying this, the whole town council taking on because it's such a big issue. And I think that we need to have everyone involved. With studying it and then coming up with recommendations. And then how do we even form this committee? How do we get the general public involved? And if they watch our meetings, they'll know what we're interested in rather than putting it in a small subcommittee. Um, I also think we have a lot of other issues going on in the town. That it's not the greatest time to to pursue this. Um. And in terms of a presidential election, I don't think we have data on what it's like to put up a charter review to the town. When it's not a presidential election. So I understand there's about four thousand more people that vote during a presidential election, Rita. But I don't think there's data on when we've done a charter review. Not in a presidential year. Do we have? What's the turnout? So I think we're comparing it to something that we don't have. There's no comparison. So I I I I don't think that if if people were voting on a charter review, they might come out and vote. You know, more than just a regular election. So I don't think that's a driver for this particular issue.
Well, that's a good point. We don't, we may not, I don't know if we do or not. That's a really good point, but we do know that people will be going. We we already know for a fact.
But it's a distraction, a a national election, especially given what's going on in politics in our country. I think it's actually better to. Focus just on the charter review since it's such an important issue than it is to put it, couple it with the national election when there's usually lots of. Emotional issues and people fighting over things. Why not just separate it out so that we can actually do this right in another year?
And we could, and we can go back and forth on this because I have a different opinion. I I I think we should probably hear from other folks and maybe continue that discussion.
Points. Uh, Hillary, want to weigh in?
All right. Um, so I'm wrestling with this. I I I. Don't really know what the right answer is. And I look at it as sort of a chicken or egg question. Um, because it seems like some people before we, and I'm, again, I'm wrestling with it myself, so I'm not picking on anybody, but. It seems like there's there's some opinion that we need to, we need to, as in the town council, hone down on what issues. We want a commission to study. And then there's another perspective that actually you form the commission and they're the ones who figure out the issues in the charter. Um, instead of us being so directive about it. And that's, that's the question I'm wrestling with. I. One hundred percent agree with Rita that it should be during a presidential election. I think when you have the. That exceedingly high turnout that we have, you want to get as much of the electorate involved when you're doing something that's important now. Whether the next election is the right time or not is what I'm struggling with in trying to think of issues. But then also trying to put that aside and say, but that's the commission's job to to find what might need to be changed. It i- is it necessarily our role in this? To identify any issues for them because then that sort of directs them to change something. Um, so that's, that's where my head is right now. And so I'm struggling with that a little, a little bit about what the right answer is.
Thank you. Um, Robin.
I just think. I just don't think you should start this in June. So finding the volunteers and the people and then also we're we're in, you know, November, we could have. Quite a few new people in town. I think I think right now to do it is a little. I think finding people in the summer is going to be difficult, but once you started. Just six, I think.
So your your issue is with starting it in June, not necessarily. Having it in twenty twenty four, twenty six or twenty eight, just starting it now, what you think is problematic?
I'm not sure.
Which I might, I think I probably agree with that.
Yeah, I but I just think it's, I don't know if there's enough time, but my issue is at the summer. And then I'm my other issue is that in November, there could be quite a few different faces on town council. So I think right now. Might not be the best time, maybe in November is is to bring it up again. Or be prepared, but I just think over the summer trying to find to 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 create that commission is too difficult.
I would probably agree at that point.
But can I just ask Penny a quick question before I? Hear my remarks. Well, if we wanted to make that presidential election cycle. And we took the and the commission took the same amount of time as it did last time, when would we have to begin? When would the commission have to begin?
Um, from the time that you appoint a commission, the report needs to be submitted within sixteen months. It's the statutory.
But let's say to use Robin's example, if we were to start and if we were to set up the commission in November. Would there be enough time for them to do their work and get it ready for the presidential election?
They would, uh, they would have to do really fast work.
Well.
Oh, depending upon who you have on the commission. They could. They did it. Um, the last commission. Um, was actually appointed or approved in September. And uh, over the summer, there had been a good deal of talk about. Um, among the council members and among the head of the RTC and the DTC. And the council being able to. Um, uh, put out communications through the press. That if people were interested in serving on the commission, that they would submit their names. Uh, the, so it was approved in September. The commission began their work in October. Uh, and presented their report in April. At which time there were series of. Public hearings and reports back to the commission. And rewriting of what their draft was and went to the town council, again, another public hearing. So we, there was, there was timing considerations that were met.
No, I don't. Is it? I don't think that uh, the target of. Having it in a presidential election cycle is critical. I mean, it may be a a nice thing if it worked out that way. Uh, I do think that. If we found a burning reasons to do this at all, I don't see a big problem with. Uh, setting up a commission by September. I I I am influenced by the fact that three of the members that I've spoken to that were on the last commission. Strongly believe that it's beneficial to the town to go through this process. Uh, one of the epiphanies that I had because I I began this process with a strong opinion that we shouldn't. We shouldn't do it unless there was a compelling reason. And one of the reasons that I was at that view is because we've been told that. Opinion of someone like Tom O'Day that we have the best charter in the state. So why tinker with it? But then I realized that. Actually, the reason it is so good. Is because we tinker with it, is because we review it and we work on it diligently. And so uh, I I I I've come to the opinion that um. That we should do the commission, a strong opinion on timing. But I, but I I I I think it's important to be clear on what the town council's role is. Um, I think that each town council member. Could form an opinion before voting on setting up the commission that there's some important issue to be resolved in the process. That's all you have to do. Now council doesn't get to decide the outcome, doesn't even get to decide what goes to the voters. That's all the work of the commission. Uh, what we can do is we can decide to put issues before the commission that they should work on and they would have to do that if 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 we suggested that, but. Uh, we don't really, we don't really influence uh, what the outcome is going to be. We certainly don't influence what what the town is going to vote on. Uh, when we were working on. Last point, when we were working on the um. Uh, this is, we're still working on this, this issue of where should. Town's employment practices be lodged and should it be in the? In the ordinances where it is now. And 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 I was looking, doing some of the working, look at the town charter and and the town charter position provision that 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 um. Uh, that that addresses this question is um. Very outdated and someone commented that uh, one of the problems with, I think. Lawyer come, Rebecca Goldberg from Birch and Moses commented that. Um, the old, the old ordinance is is arcane because it suggests the possibility that everybody would have to have a physical exam before being. Uh, posted to a job. Uh, and and she said, that's really got to come out. That's so arcane. Well, actually, the same language is in the charter. You know, so it no one's had a reason to look at that for for maybe twenty thirty years, fifty years. It just doesn't come up. But when you do look at it, you realize that there there are things like that all over the charter. Uh, so I'm, I I I think it's a good idea to do it, but but my suggestion is each of each of us should should take a look and say. You know, if you don't think there's a compelling reason to do the exercise at all, then let's not do it. Uh, but I don't think we should, we should embark on a process of evaluating what the outcome of the issue should be, should only be, is there, is, are there important issue?
The uh, the comment was made that I forwarded to everyone a list of topics. That list of topics, if you look at the paper, says June two thousand fifteen. These were the topics that were accumulated through interviews with all the department heads. Board of Education head. Um, uh, anyone who had been appointed or elected. To any board, commission, committee, what have you. So there were. Oh, there had to have been close to a hundred or so individuals who were. Um. Interviewed and asked by uh, paper request also to submit those questions that they themselves have experienced. Either in studying the charter or as you just did in practice of a. Um, resolving an issue, finding that there was something in the charter that was a hurdle or a hiccup, however you want to pronounce it. Um, in the charter that needed to be addressed. So all of these, and it's two pages of issues. Um, and they're most likely, you know, this in Thomas isn't even on this list. Issues that surface from people's experience with the charter. Um, and so it's that long list against gets submitted to the commission. They then do the research on each of these issues. And they then come up through that research with whether or not it is waiting enough to warrant a charter change. There were five such issues uh, last time. There were a number of those issues that are on this list. That either they hadn't completed the research on it or didn't feel that, hey, they were sufficiently comfortable with making a recommendation. Um. With those issues, but these are the issues that are still being talked about and are outstanding and they've been sitting there since two thousand fifteen.
I just want to add that the last commission was formed August two thousand fifteen. The final report was submitted July two thousand sixteen. So eleven months. I think there's time to wait. And like we said, this revision may not actually be a revision. It may just be a review. So the urgency to finish before the election is only if you make revisions, I believe, right? Because then you have to put the revisions up for a vote. But I still think, I think we have time to wait and we could still probably make that election deadline if changes came about. But with all the changes coming on the town council, the upcoming election, the summer, I just don't feel like we should take this on right now.
The town council has no role in it other than appointing the committee. And so. People who are new to the town council would not be versed enough. Perhaps on the charter to be making those recommendations for individual to sit on the committee. Mission.
I think that's part of the problem that your writing with the town council is having to say. And I think that we have to determine whether or not. Feel that there needs to be a change.
So you've studied the issues, don't know. The. The depth of an issue.
Yes, you do, because since we're on town council, we have more familiarity with what works and what doesn't. What things may want to be changed or what things may be better off not modifying at all.
Hence, you wouldn't wait for after November with new people because they have not been part of the council. You would want to take advantage of the twelve people who are here. Who have been, you know, enmeshed in in the operation. Not not the new people who haven't had that experience yet.
Right? Uh, I I don't, I disagree because before I came on town council, I pretty much knew how the town ran. So I think that it would be naive for us to assume that because you're not on town council, you have no clue.
All right, so. I'm here, I'm, I mean, if you want, we can take a straw poll as far as you go, as far as timing and whether or not we want to actually appoint a. Mission or not, a committee or not.
Just one minor point is that if the statute says that they have sixteen months from the time of appointment, we cannot truncate that. I don't think if it's statutory. So if they need that time.
Oh, yeah.
Right? That like, so that's why a delay and only giving them a year. We can, we could certainly suggest we want it, we want any issues you identify on the ballot in November of twenty twenty four, but. They're they're not statutorily required to give us that report. And if it's not thorough, I. We want, if it doesn't, that time is there for a reason. So. Um. You know, if if we're going to do this, we probably should. Point sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I mean, I I guess that's the biggest question in the room is, you know, I I know Penny's come up with this list of things that. I'm sorry, the charter, the charter, the old charter revision committee came up with a list that they decided not to act on. Not act on these items on this list. I've looked at the list and everybody here has looked at the list and there's nothing to me on this list currently. That is compelling enough to go through the entire process of. Forming this committee, going through all this. I need to be able to look at something and say, okay, the council recommends, we're going to do this. We're going to kick off a huge undertaking. Opening up the charter, which is a big deal. And go forward with this, but there's several people. You know, nine, ten of us that really don't know why we're doing it. You know, we're looking at all this stuff saying, we just did it seven years ago. They did a job when they did this charter. I was amazed how many, how many. Rat grammatical grammatical errors they took out of the charter. I mean, it was pages and pages of red line. That they've that they went through just seven years ago. So I can't imagine that a new commission is going to find all these new quote unquote errors that are out there, but. Maybe that's, maybe that's true. And a fresh set of eyes will find a few, but. It's got it, there's got to be a compelling reason why we're opening this up, not just because. It's a, it, I I understand what Rita's saying. It's good to review yourself. Uh, and and look in the mirror, but. Sometimes I I I equate it to giving a job to, I I I'm in the auto business. So you take a used car and it's it's got a hundred miles on it and you give it to a mechanic. You say, here, I'm going to give you two hundred dollars. Look under the hood and see what you can find out about this car. And because he got the two hundred dollars, he has to find something wrong with it. And I feel like that's what we're assigning this commission to. There's something, we're assigning them the job to find out. What is quote unquote wrong and coming up with a list like this, when I don't know that there's enough. Support on the council to open this up again, I, you know, and that's just what I'm hearing. So.
Can I just make my comment on that though? So. They're not being charged. I understand that you think that they're they're going to have to come up with something, right? But ultimately, we would decide if it made sense or not, right? Like.
No, well, we know, we don't, we don't.
All those, all those issues that came forward, they didn't shoot, I guess what I'm saying is they identified all of.
All those, all those issues that came forward, they didn't shoot, I guess what I'm saying is they identified all of those things, but then ultimately did not decide. To bring them before the electorate, right?
Right.
Right, that's what, that's what I mean. You you can come up with things that. Could be changed, but then make the decision that it doesn't make sense to actually go through an election, right? So I I think.
That's the review.
Right, and I think that exercise is vital because, you know, flawed human beings, you can't, you can't, we cannot. Proceed the future and back in two thousand seven, they may have not anticipated something or two thousand, sorry, sixteen, they may have not anticipated something that has changed since then or. A new process that has come about or or like what whatever, there are a couple, again, there are things that are in my head that I'm I'm thinking of, but. Review, they they wrote that into the charter for a reason that we should be looking at this regularly. There's a reason for it. And if our opinion is we shouldn't be looking for something that if you don't see an issue, I think that's a flawed way of looking at it because the whole point to doing it is is. It's 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 a healthy review.
It is, it is a healthy review, but.
That's all.
You know, we, it it's recommended every ten, you don't have to do it every ten, it's just recommend, so that doesn't mean that we have to open up our charter. Every ten years, you don't have to do it, and that's, that's my point. It's like. If we open up this charter, what are we opening it up for? What? Give me the rea, last time we did this, we had. Five or six major things that we were looking at. I just don't see any of those things. That's the problem.
And well, you know, businesses don't necessarily, I mean, businesses will do a review just to, you know, it's like, it's like, it's like a physical, it's like. Checking things out and seeing how they could do things better to to be more relevant to their customers. And it's not the same thing where government, these are not customers, these are constituents, but it's the same idea. You want it, you want to maintain your relevancy.
Let me just chime in, i- if we don't do this tonight. We could do it three months from now, we could do it two years from now, we could do it five years from now. There's no urgency about when we make this decision. It seems to me the sense of the council is that we're not ready to do this, so let's just not do it. Now, yeah, do a straw poll. All right, so Mark, Mark, one more.
I I if we do do it, it should be during a presidential election. You think people are going to show up for a charter votes on that? You're you're you're. Misguided, at least that's my opinion. Yeah, so that's point one. I. I I appreciated Tom's comments about. Everyone should think of an issue that. They may think needs to be reviewed, and if you can't come up with then one. At least one, then we shouldn't go through with this, so. I I'm kind of opposed to even a straw poll right now because. We should decide whether or not there are issues that people. With that have been on the town council. Think. Are worth addressing. And we should probably take a month and maybe decide in July.
That's fair. So I mean, Penny, you want to get, you want to make the list or send that list around again and just. You're just a messenger again.
Mission, and and I just want everyone to. Also think about, oh, respectful we then will be to. Other people who are on boards and commissions and our department heads. As to their working within the system and the hiccups that they may be faced with. Like you just were faced with one last night. If it was last night. And so until you get into something and actually have it operational, you may not know that it was a problem. And so that's why you need to go to those people who are actually got their fingers in the pie and say, you know what? I've always had a little problem trying to get something accomplished because I can't. Get past the charter and so we've got to respect those individuals. Opinions from experiential standpoint as to what is problematic. Now, it may not rise to a charter change. It may be an ordinance change, it may be an administrative change from an operational standpoint. But until those individuals have an opportunity to be asked to express their concerns. I think it's a point of respect to them.
Yeah, so how do we gather that information to to the point where we're confident that. We have issues that we need to open? That's the question is, I I guess, right, so we'll look at that.
And then after they submitted their responses of the issues that they found. They were actually interviewed by members of the committee.
And in looking back, even at that list, some of the issues that were brought up have completely changed as well, so it's, and that's, that's the, that's the crux here. So how do we, is there a way, Tucker, can you send a a note around town halls and just say, you know, is there any anything based on?
That'd be a formal letter.
Well, I mean, just.
Town Council, but we are considering opening a commission. Let me see if I can find the letter.
Okay, you know, no, I haven't heard anybody from from government come to me and I'm in that building a lot saying, hey, you know, I've got an issue, we've got to change the charter, so. But anyway.
I would think that that letter would then have to be public if you're asking department heads. What then, then the public should be able to see that before we proceed. It wouldn't be just between us and or a few people here and.
Yeah, and and this is just part of an informal. Information gathering, I mean, that's, this is what we should do before we start to tackle this is, you know, I I still get back to that elevator speech with some. One of our residents says, why are you opening the charter? Give me, give me the top three or four reasons and I I can't answer the question. Yeah, so far I haven't been able to answer the question, so that's what I'm looking for.
I don't think you can simplify that. Process that I think was extremely beneficial about the charter review process last time, and I'm sure in the past. That 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 methodical interviewing of almost a hundred people. I don't think you can do that on the fly in a couple of weeks. You know, I I I think whatever, each individual on the town council, whatever process that you would think is important for you to gather information, go for it, but. But to send a letter out and invite, you know, a process and and as Kim points out, has to be in public. We we could, it could take us four or five meetings to to process people's reactions to that letter. I think, I think if you're going to do that process, you should do it within the. Within the, within the, you know, parameters of a charter review commission.
And that's the issue is once you start the clock, you've got to. So that's now we're, it's.
We certainly can't start the clock now.
Like a big circle already now.
If we discuss it again in. And actually vote on it in in September, it had, you have time to get to the RTC and the DTC and public commentary. Asking people to submit their names to be considered to sit on a commission. I I just sat down. Couple of weeks ago and I got about three quarters of a page of names. People who have been involved in boards and commissions, people have been involved, you know, with some of the projects that have been town projects. Former members of boards and commissions. People who had. Express an interest in. Government, so there are folks out there who who do care.
If we want to, we could invite members of the. Charter commission that served last time to speak to us and give their opinions on.
I I think it would be helpful to take a straw poll, not that it doesn't mean we can still take it up in July, but I I think it would be helpful to know how many of us think that it's necessary at this point.
Let's take a straw poll then. Who who thinks it's necessary to. Do this. Better review revision prior to.
Because then that's, that's a little vague in terms of like, with the objective of being in the two thousand twenty four, like putting. Potential revisions for the two thousand twenty four. Electorate. We, can we somehow say that? Because. I don't, I don't agree that it needs to start right now, but I think by September we should start, right? So it's not November.
I mean, I'm okay with the idea that we want, I I'm all for. The idea of getting it into a November election, but you commented before about rushing to get to the November election makes. More sense to me than anything I heard tonight. Why in the world are we rushing to get to that election when we, we're not even into the starting blocks? As do we want to do this?
I think that's a good question and we can wrap this up. I won't take long, but um. I think we should ask ourselves too, if there weren't a presidential election coming in. Before would we be having this conversation?
That's correct.
So I think that's another thing to contemplate as you consider whether. This is something we should do now or not.
Well, we wouldn't be doing it now because that's the reason it came to our attention.
In the next couple of months.
I mean, it, we have ten year, you know. The ten year rule. Addresses our consideration of whether we should set up a, you know, so, but in any case, it's there, there's a ten year cycle. And this is what eight years, so, you know, no, we don't, we're not forced to do anything. Yeah.
I agree. No, I I agree.
Well, see, I think it's it's mixed, it partially. Saying everybody should. I'm suggesting that everybody think of that. I'm not going to debate it because I agree that the timing should be during a presidential election. My question is, would we be having this conversation now if there weren't a presidential election? There be that urgency? That's a good question.
Um, just. My personal opinion right now is I think it seems pretty clear action we probably should take here. Let's just, we could talk about whether it's appropriate to open up the process, you know, sometime in the near future, but right now, I don't think I'm prepared to, let's talk about constituting a commission. Show on the road or like Robin said, start this engine. I love that. That's if I think maybe I'm wrong, but maybe that's where we're at and. I have to say, Dr. Lutzy sitting here is coming off an awesome, awesome day, so. So I'm on the rush, but all days for you to have to sit here, like, this is a tough one.
All right, so let's just, let's tailor it till July and we'll take it up again in July. All right.
Hey.
All right, moving on. Appointments. Next up, I remember seven appointments of the New Canaan Board of Trustees representatives on your tablets and we tried to get it out, we had a little electronics happening today, but we have the two. Library representatives and Tom, do you want to just give us a synopsis of what we talked about the other night? This book about defer to Hillary on that, Hillary, you down there?
I'm sorry, so the bylaws and ordinances committee met the other night and one of the issues that we discussed is. The nomination. Of members to the library board of trustees as per the MOU and. I I can let Steve introduce the candidates if he wants, they are two exceptional. Community members. Who have stepped up and offered to. To serve in that capacity. We. Not, we did not draft an ordinance, but we did draft some. Language that we thought would be helpful to set sort of guardrails around. These nominations and what the expectations are from these nominees. Would you like me to read that into the record? Okay. So. The language that we've come up with or that we've drafted is as per the memorandum of understanding between the town of New Canaan. And the New Canaan Public Library parentheses, the MOU. The chairperson of the New Canaan Town Council shall nominate two individuals to the library's Board of Trustees. And they will be heretofore referred to as the town nominated trustees. The town nominated trustees are subject to approval by the library in the same manner it conducts when approving any new library trustee. And are subject to the same attendant obligations and rights as any other library trustee. The town nominated trustee shall not be members of the same political party. Once approved by the library, the town nominated trustee shall report to the town council twice per year. On topics consistent with their governance role as trustees of the library. So that is the language. That was drafted. There were some questions that came up during the committee meeting, which I'm sure will come up tonight and I'll let those happen.
Just quickly comment, in my mind, the reason, excuse me, the reason we're putting forth this language is. To me, most importantly, assurance to. Individuals that we nominate. As to what they're, so that they can be comfortable in their role. And that we're not, just to use a little bit of hyperbole, we're not asking these people to be spies for us. And what goes on inside the library, that's, that's legally not possible. Is they, if they're going to be in the library board, they have a fiduciary obligation. In that capacity to serve the library and not directly to serve us. That doesn't mean that we can't have a. Very useful process where they come and appear for us and we can have useful conversations and. It'd be very valuable, but I I just wanted to be clear to to them, the people we're appointing, that we're not asking, not asking them to do something they'd be uncomfortable doing. Thank you, Tom. Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a minute to just introduce two. Nominees, because we had a big discussion about the nominees and. Our first nominee is. Doug Stewart, who everyone's familiar with. Obviously runs a Walter Stewart's Market here in town. Just read a brief bio, Doug and his wife Julie reside in New Canaan with their three children, Scarlett. Audrey and Griffin. Doug is VP and co-owner of Walter Stewart's Market, fourth generation family owned business in Canaan, and he's president of Stewart's Wine and Spirits. Doug serves on the board of the New Canaan Chamber of Commerce. He's a former board member of the Kwanis Club of New Canaan. Doug and Julia are members of the New Canaan Field Club. And Doug enjoys racket sports, plays guitar in a local band, so that is Doug. Everybody knows Doug, I think. He's all over town. Second nominee and 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 Doug is our Democratic nominee, the Republican nominee is. Mark Dewey, Dr. Mark Dewey, Mark is. He's very familiar with the council during the last thirty seven years. Dr. Dewey has managed a thriving dental practice as well as an investment group. He's been involved civically in town and in New Canaan. State of Connecticut, Amherst College, Cristo Ray High School. Stanford Health in Stanford. He served in town in New Canaan as chairman of town council for six years. Chairman of Park and Rec for five years. Been on the executive committee of the Red Cross for six years and other task forces in Canaan. He served on the health advisory board of the state of Connecticut. Graduated Amherst College. He's currently the vice chairman of the Board of Trustees at Cristo Ray High School. He's served on the board since two thousand four. Was influential in establishing a four hundred student inner city school. East Harlem, one on one oh six street and Park Avenue, New York City, compily challenged students. And he graduated over eleven hundred students. In two thousand fifteen, he was elected to the Stanford Health Board of Directors. He served as a chairman of the board. And he's been in, and he's been on that board during the construction of a four hundred fifty million dollar hospital. And also was responsible for entering into collaboration with both the hospital for special surgery. And a Farber Cancer Institute, so there's a couple of pretty well qualified candidates, so I'm sorry. Hey, Mark.
Mo- a motion to approve Dr. Mark and Doug to the library board.
All right, all in favor?
Great discussion.
Discussion, sorry, go ahead, discussion. Mike, Mike.
Question.
Well, we were, we discussed clarifying the obligations of the trustee as in financial obligations. I wouldn't want it to be hardship for someone who's nominated to have to. Feel pressured to donate. Anything unless they choose to, so have we clarified that?
I so I I did clarify that. My understanding is that. The requirement of board members and you can probably speak to this is that they make the library. A philanthropic priority for them, so if they do give philanthropically, charitably, that the library be. A priority, so that's not setting a number value. I mean, if you give. Fifty dollars and that's what you're capable of giving or twenty and that's a priority for you and your charitable giving. Then you would meet that requirement of the board, so.
Well, I mean, I I really strongly feel that these are town appointed, town nominated trustees and the town. Provides seventy percent of the operating funds. That really should be enough of their. Philanthropic. Contribution, but everybody who serves on the board is a community member now, everybody who serves on the library board and they.
But they're not town appointed.
No, they're not, they're not town nominated, but this was also a part of an MOU that was given. These. This agreement to have two town nominated boards was given as part of an MOU for the ten million dollar grant, which. Given, it came in. Well, I mean, I don't know if they came in under budget or hit the budget, but they've delivered a magnificent library to our community. It's not rare, I don't think, for nonprofit board members to. Give some sort of philanthropic donation and in fact, it would lessen our town burden if somebody's giving. More as a board member, would it not?
Even if it's just by a nominal.
I mean, the town does contribute. An awful lot, very supportive. If these are town appointed, I feel like that.
So. We're nominating them, but they're. We're nominating them, but they're. Discuss this at at the meeting. Their primary obligation is they are a trustee of the library, number one. They answer to the library, number one. They are the the job that we've given them is that they will be coming to us a couple of times a year. According to. You know, and 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 that's the interaction that we're going to have. We're not, it's, we're nominating them and have a. Have a the ability to get them onto the board. Way the MOU and the way the language is written is. They they are fully participating library as trustee. Whatever the trustees of the libraries conditions are, they will. They will meet those. You know, and and I think most most nonprofits have that statement where. If you're a, if you're a trustee or on a board. They want to be able to say for grant purposes, not specifically, that a hundred percent of their board members. Contributed to. Whatever the the cause is, because without that. Some of the grant money or a lot of the grant money isn't available. You don't have a hundred percent board participation. You're not getting any money. It's very important that these board members know going in that they have some sort of. The bottom line, the key point is that when we negotiated the MOU. Library said, if these two people are going to be on our board, they have to live by all the rules of normal board members. It's not our. We no longer have the option of redesigning uh, the rules for library board members.
We can only choose board members who can afford. The.
Well, if they can afford fifty dollars a year, they're in, I think. Whatever.
Understand that.
And I, it's. It it's a good point, Maria, but it's, you know. We're in a very, very lucky town, and most people that would take the time to serve on a board like that are going. Some.
But.
If not, they should come to us and. Let us know.
So I I was concerned. As well, but now that you've explained what that is, Hillary, that it's that that it's a philanthropic priority and it's not a specific number. I'm much more comfortable with that. Um, because I was a little uncomfortable with like a specific amount that was required. Um, I I'm much more comfortable with this. I also think. Yes, the the town gave a certain amount of money, but if. We're nominating these people and saying, we're going to cover their like contribution. Then again, it's like they have to. It just, it doesn't seem it like having like thought through this and hearing that, I'm much more comfortable with this situation.
Doesn't matter.
No, no, I I know. Anyway, I'm just, I'm just. Doesn't, I know it doesn't matter, but I'm just. Okay. Anyway.
Since not all of us were part of the. Committee meeting. Maybe not all of us, you know, watched it on that good. Opportunity too. Um, can we review what the rationale was in the MOU to have two people? Pointed or recommended by the town council? Was there? Uh, any content in those? Um, discussions affirming that. That there was some obligation for reporting. Uh, was there any timing specified? Um, what does the town? What do we think we're getting from that? I know we have representatives from the Board of Finance. Are going through their budget and so forth. But from, you sit on a board, it is much more than a financial. Kind of consideration. It is programmatic um. Discussions, uh, it's outreach into the community for fundraising, or these people are going to be outreach. Obliged to. Their friends to be contributing to the library, I mean.
Their their library.
Was the intent of the MOU.
Well, their library trustees and the the MOU was written and the language was written, and we approved the language. And that's, we're not changing that language tonight, and we're not, there's no reason. We all know where we are. We're literally just voting two people on right now. It's, we're at the end of the end of the line here. We're not.
You want me to read the language of the.
Yeah, why don't you read the language just one more time? One more time. Yeah.
So a long time ago, we did it.
Okay, read the language, Hillary, one more time.
Nomination of members to increase town representation, the library will amend its bylaws to allow for the nomination by the chairman of the town. Of the town's town council. Of two members to the library's Board of Trustees. Rent each. Each and additional town trustee. The individuals nominated as additional town trustees will be subject to approval by the library. In the same manner it conducts when approving any new trustee. Additional town trustees will be entitled to vote and will be counted for purposes of a quorum. So the MOU itself, the language of the MOU, doesn't contemplate any reporting function back to us. It we're actually imposing more upon them than the MOU requires. Um, and they're happy to do it, which I think is wonderful. Um, so that is what the MOU requires on its face, and we have to sort of go with that language, I think.
And then just one more time, just read the language that we're putting on as. Everybody's clear.
Okay. As per the. As per the memorandum of understanding between the town of New Canaan and the New Canaan Public Library. About the MOU, the chairperson of the New Canaan Town Council shall nominate two individuals to the library's Board of Trustees. That quote unquote town nominated trustees. The town nominated trustees are subject to approval by the library in the same manner it conducts when approving new library trustee. And are subject to the same attendant obligations and rights as any other library trustee. The town nominated trustee shall not be members of the same political party. Once approved by the library, the town nominated trustee shall report to the town council twice per year on topics consistent with their governance role as trustees of the library.
Thank you. Okay. Now we're on record. Let's see, what last last comment, then we're going to vote.
Um, Hillary, in reference to what you just said. The thing that troubles me is that it says that the. Chairman of town council. But it doesn't say anything about a vote by the town.
Right, and that's what the MOU says, that the chair.
It should be with a vote of town council. I can't accept it to be just one individual.
Can't change the MOU, but. This this chairman is is. Giving everybody the courtesy of a vote. I'd love to see us right now.
The best chairman of the county for others.
Well, I I'll stick around a few more years and make sure that uh. End of the meeting. Chairman takes a vote, does that?
Appreciate the courtesy.
Okay, let's go, guys. Got to vote on this. We got a long, we got a long executive session. Alright, there's a motion on the floor. We had a second. All in favor? Anybody opposed? No?
Can we just add that if there's a hardship, they come to the chair? Who nominated them?
Wait, that's putting the chair on. What?
Right.
Alright, we're gonna skip committee reports.
Yes.
And we're going to go right to executive session. Um, item number nine, executive session, security matters. He's had a long day, so we got to get him in and out of here, so. Can we uh, invite anybody into the room that needs to stay? We'll have to, we'll have to uh, come back to Zoom later. And uh, anybody that's not invited into executive, thank you so much for coming. Appreciate it. Motion to enter into executive, Hillary, second, Mike, all in favor? That's. That's unanimous. We are going to invite in. Dr. Lutsey. Beef. You got to state your names too. Ackman. And that is it. Is there anybody in? Yeah.